We're going to go ahead and get started tonight. Thank you so much for coming. First up, we have the fiscal year 2023 fourth quarter report. Over to you, Mr. Manager.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The first item for discussion this afternoon is the fiscal year 2023 fourth quarter report, and Lisa Soprano, our Director of Budget, is presenting for you this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council, and today is one of the most exciting days in a budgeter's life because the budget that we started 12, 18, 24 months ago has finally come to, almost to fruition. The Finance Department still has several more weeks of adjustments to make, but what you will see today is kind of the brief overview of budget to actual comparison of what we started on July 1st, 2022, and where we are today. So, to remind City Council, this budget was literally started in the throes of COVID. It was started in late '21 and in '22, and I hate to bring up old memories, but we were talking about resurgence, we were talking about spikes, we were talking about, most importantly, a recession that would either be a hard-landing or prolonged recession, and this budget was built on the views of a recession that would have happened sometime in 2023. So, as such, we lowered our revenue numbers and expectations for not having prolonged inflation and having a very harsh recession. Of course, the economy has not acted according to any textbook's rules ever since COVID has started. What has proven true during COVID, prior to COVID, and continues to be so is that our real estate, personal property, and machinery tools base are very strong and solid. They have performed according to the way we were going to estimate them and have exceeded in almost all the cases. And also, our consumer sensitive taxes, meals tax, BPOs, and sales tax have remained strong, but we recognize that those receipts were driven by primarily inflation. So, how did just, I'm just going to review the general fund only. So, real estate taxes, after we have deducted $4 million for tax relief, we came in $1.5 million above our $241 million revenue estimate. Now, these first estimates include current taxes, delinquencies, public and public service corporations, as well as tax relief. So, $1.5 million higher than we had estimated. Personal property tax, this was a little bit of a strange creature this fiscal year. Half of the personal property taxes were collected at a rate 75% of the assessed value. The other half were collected at 100% of the assessed value for personal property. As such, combined with delinquencies and current taxes, we came almost $3 million higher than estimated, which offset our almost $3 million loss in machinery tools. This was a very aggressive revenue estimate for this particular category. We have had businesses, Continental being one of them, that has left the city, and it was supposed to leave at a slower pace than it actually did, so we had included that in this particular revenue estimate, but between delinquencies and current taxes, it was almost $3 million shortfall. Sales tax was one of the categories that we adjusted in February of this calendar year once we saw the second quarter revenue estimates. It continued to be very strong. We collected about $2.8, $2.9 million in sales tax regardless of inflation on average every month. We are beginning to see in this fiscal year a slight slowing of that sales tax. We have only received the July sales tax so far this fiscal year, and it's about $134,000 less than June. So, we're beginning to see the slowing of inflation and the impact of planning for student loans to beginning to be paid again next month. Meals tax also was one of the categories that we increased in our estimate to meet the performance that we were seeing in February, and we have almost $2 million more collected in that area. Lodging tax, this was particularly sensitive during COVID. It bottomed out to just above $3 million during the height of the COVID period, so we are now back at pre-COVID levels in our collection, and so in our lodging tax. Amusement tax was another one that was a very hard hit during COVID. This one has rebounded to pre-COVID levels, and we've also had open several venues since COVID that collects amusement tax. Taxes on deeds was very aggressive during COVID. That's when the housing market was its highest. The Federal Reserve's actions of raising interest rates 11 times to bring down and moderate inflation has had its effect on this particular revenue source, but still we are above what we collected last year, and we are still collecting about $150,000 per month in taxes on any deeds that are issued in the city. BPOs taxes, this is business professional occupational license. These are taxes that are paid on a calendar year basis, so these are for receipts for contractors, retailers, wholesalers, repairs, and there's always one I always forget, I'm sorry. This is the third year that we have been in the $3 million level above what we had estimated. So, our businesses are showing very strong behavior during this fiscal year, and this is one the Federal Reserve we got a benefit from, interest earnings. We had initially estimated only $500,000 for this, and this is interest earnings that the city has on cash on hand. Because of those 11 interest rate hikes during the fiscal year, we actually collected almost $9 million more in just interest earnings than we had budgeted for. So, overall, our general fund revenues performed exceedingly well at $26 million or almost 5% above what we had budgeted. So, on the expenditure side, we still operated in a very strict, controlled expenditure level because we still had to address inflation that was affecting the city's purchase of goods and services. We had almost $13 million in salaries and benefit savings. We still have very hard-to-fill positions in some job classes. Job competition is very, very real, and so we've had some prolonged vacancies that generated almost $13 million in savings. Contractual services is one area where we saw the impact of inflation. Almost $500,000 of this overage is for our security hired staffing alone, so that contract kicked in its inflationary clause, and we paid almost a half million more just there. Materials and supplies, the stuff that we buy, this is where we probably had the greatest control, and we were able to slow down without changing or affecting citizen services and saved almost $2 million there. And then, all other expenses, which includes debt service, which includes our transfers to schools, and our grants came $1.1 million higher than budgeted. Of this $1.1 million, over $400,000 came in the form of grants from state and local agencies that we had not anticipated, so that's a good news in that particular area. Also, in this particular area, we had about $456,000 in a contribution to port our homeless winter sheltering program to take care of overnight sheltering and continuing to have social distances, and plus, there was an unfortunate flu outbreak at the end of the program that required some additional cleaning and servicing for there. So, this is where the budget meets the financial planning. The Finance Department will continue to make adjustments to these numbers all the way through the audit if necessary. To complete the process of the budget, we are recommending that $15.5 million be transferred to cash capital at year-end. What this does is it gives us ready cash for unprogrammed, unplanned projects, and it also helps us defer from having to borrow that much and pay interest on that much debt in the future. There will be over $24 million that will roll into fund balance at year-end if finance closed absolutely today. That will increase our unassigned fund balance, and it will also create a reserve of about $13 million that we can draw on if necessary. The importance of this is this is one of our debt management policies that we have, and this is one of the things that the rating agencies look at specifically. Our policy is 7.5%. We are almost at 15%, projected at year-end, and our eventual goal is 20%. Now, this $24 million doesn't move, it's a lot of money, trust me, it's a lot of money, but it doesn't move that percentage needle very much, and only moves it from 14.2 to 14.8, but what it signals to the rating agencies is that we're planning for our future, we're conservative, and we're trying to grow our fund balance. And then, finance will continue to do its closing activities, which includes writing off uncollected taxes and bad debts all the way through the end of the fiscal year, and then in December, you will have a report from our external auditors explaining how the financial picture actually looks, and is the year-end report from finance that is the official record of the financial activities for the city for the fiscal year. So, with that, any questions? Yes, sir.
So, the $15 million, didn't that include 2024? Those are two separate?
Two separate, yes, sir.
Okay. So, $39 million, okay.
Do we have any more questions? Thank you. Next up, we will have a Choice Neighborhoods Initiative update from Owen, I believe.
Yes, we have three people providing a presentation for you this afternoon. First is Owen Miller, Acting Assistant City Manager, followed by Karen Wilds, Director of the Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority, will then be followed by Derek Perry, Assistant Director of Development. We're awfully proud of the work that we've been able to complete, and I hope you'll take a deeper appreciation of this work away from the presentation today.
Great, thank you, Alan. All right, so, good afternoon, Council, appreciate you guys giving me the time today. We have a progress report for you today related to our Choice Neighborhood Initiative. We've done these periodically, but we haven't done one since the turn of the year, excuse me, and just talking with Alan, we thought it would be timely now to provide one. I'll just give quickly, we'll have three plan updates. I will give a brief kind of background introduction and then get into our people plan, then I'll turn it over to Karen Wilds, Executive Director for Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority, who will give a housing update, and then finally turn it over to Derek Perry, Assistant Director for Development, to give a neighborhood update. We also have additional staff here in the room that can help us should any questions arise. Did want to just take a moment, kind of as Alan already alluded to, just to give kudos to the staff from all the departments, divisions, agencies that has made this possible, as well as just kind of thank not only City Council, who's been incredibly supportive of this effort, but really our residents, who have been so involved since the planning stages all the way up through the present, including our Citizens Advisory Committee. So, just wanted to give some kudos to all of those that have been involved. So, let's see. So, first, I'll just take just a couple moments and give a little bit of background before actually getting into the plan updates. So, kind of where to begin? So, in 2016, the city was fortunate enough to be awarded a $500,000 planning grant, and it was led by our planning department. They did a tremendous job over the course of about 12, 18 months, really collected community input and feedback on that plan. It really became a model for HUD on how you conduct kind of a citizen-centered, focused approach to getting that that plan together. We conducted over 70 public meetings, had over 1,000 total participants, and throughout the course of that, came to a couple of different conclusions, one of which is that the target housing would really be our Ridley Place apartments. The feedback that we got from residents and as well as the professionals is truly the housing was antiquated and needed to be replaced. It was not simply a remodel effort that was required. Also, we identified our larger Ridley Marshall Target neighborhood, and my colleagues will probably show a map shortly, but in essence, I mean, the interstate provides part of the boundaries, northwest boundary, then you've got the harbor, and then finally Marshall Avenue is the street for the east. That effort, that initial planning effort, led to the final deliverable, that product, which was a transformation plan. That was really the basis for the, our initial submission for implementation grant in 2017. While we weren't successful with that one, we got a lot of good feedback, which we used to apply again the following year, and then we were very fortunate to hear that in 2019, we were awarded the implementation grant. So, as you see here, we're excited to see the Secretary come down and join us. Always exciting when you can get a very large check, right? Both in the number of zeros, but also the size of the check itself, so we were excited about that. Not only did they come down to present us the award, but it also made the announcement of the other cohort of implementation grant recipients at that time, so it was very exciting. I will say, and you'll see it, I think, throughout the presentation, that that $30 million is certainly a lot, but it really is more of a catalyst for the additional leverage that not only the city provided, but a lot of our other partnering agencies, state, federal, and you'll kind of see that throughout the different plans we talk about today. Truly does take a, take a lot of money and a lot of team effort to get to where we eventually want to go. So, just quickly, very quickly, you know, kind of what is the CNI? In essence, and what you'll hear today is it's focused on three main components, which then require three plans. People plan, which I'll touch on in just a moment, our housing plan, and then finally the neighborhood plan. I will say, and certainly smarter folks than me have kind of have shared this, is that the CNI really stems from or is a successor to an earlier grant, which HUD created, the HOPE 6 grant, and at that time, they provided quite a bit of funding for replacement of antiquated public housing, but I think the realization occurred that, you know, you can certainly replace public housing, but that is not in and of itself transformational. And so, that's why the focus you'll see today on the new approach, which really looks after not only the housing, but also the neighborhood, larger neighborhood, and then finally, and perhaps most importantly, the people as well. And so, that's what I'll touch on right now. So, so the people plan centers around the 256, I think, Karen can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but 256 Ridley families that were in Ridley Place at the time during the move-out initially. So, the people plan goals, people plan goals you'll see here in front of you are listed, and then I'll touch on a number of the elements kind of throughout the course of the presentation. We'll hear a little bit more about them. But, but while I said earlier, it really takes a team effort for any of the particular plans, we do have lead agencies for each of those plans, and lead agency for the people plan is our friends with Urban Strategies Incorporated. So, fortunate to be joined by a number of the representatives in the room here today. They can certainly help me with any questions, should there be any as well. But I wanted to provide just a very brief snapshot of their, kind of their reach and the scope of the work that they do. We've been fortunate enough to have them onboard as our people plan lead since early 2022, I think, but they really bring a wealth of experience to the position. As you can see, they are across the country, they work in this type of work across the country in a number of localities, but particularly pleased to have them be able to draw on the experience of over a dozen CNI implementation grant locality as well. And so, that, that experience is truly helpful as we work our own plan. So, how do they do that? They've got a, a real team approach. They're fortunate enough to draw upon experts at their national level, their national office, but we also have a team right here in Newport News, and so these are some of the folks you see right here on the screen that kind of serve in those important functions and conduct the work that they do with our residents. What exactly do they do? So, I provided a slide, it's a bit much, I'll just kind of try to hit the highlights really quickly. I mean, quite frankly, it provides that, I will describe it as case management, they'd really describe it as family support services. They provide them currently to about 175 families that are currently in case management. We're always looking to expand that with our residents, make sure they're able to take advantage of all there is to offer. What do they do there? They provide them that support services, that case management. They also provide and connect those residents to all the resources that are available to them, so whether that's outside in the wider community or also our CNI partners. We've got several dozen CNI partners that make commitments to this, and so we really want to connect our residents with those, with those services that are being provided. I'll, you'll see it in a moment, but some of the areas, including where we get periodic report-outs, things related to economic mobility, health, education, and housing stability. One of those key partners, in addition to USI, that really leads the people plan effort is Newport News Public Schools. So, we've been very fortunate, they've been a key partner since the inception of the grant. They currently work with 200 students, over 200 students who are CNI families that currently are enrolled in Newport News Public Schools. They work on a number of areas of focus, but as you can see here in front of your screen, kindergarten readiness, academic proficiency, and then really preparing them for graduation or after graduation. I think it's fair to say that a lot of the work that they do correlates or ties nicely with kind of the goals that our Newport News Public Schools has for all of our students, but the understanding is, you know, this cohort requires some additional attention, assistance, and support, and so we do that through dedicated staff as well as additional And then, before I turn it over to Karen to begin kind of the housing update, I did want to kind of provide just a very quick snapshot. So, I touched on some of those key areas where we're looking to, to have results and build progress. This is a snapshot of kind of the monthly report that USI compiles, working with all of our partners, including Newport News Public Schools, to kind of show how we're making those progress, obviously towards our ultimate goals. So, we get this report on a monthly basis, and then a lot of this information is then fed up to HUD, who has a quarterly reporting requirement. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Karen Wilds, and she can touch on our housing plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Owen. I think that was a great summary of sort of how we got where we are today, and I'm really excited to be here to update you all on where we are with our progress and the housing plan for CNI. So, first I want to say thanks to the city staff and the city council for all the support and coordination that it's taken to bring us, to bring us this far. So, our, this list, the, the goals that we've had for our housing plan for Choice Neighborhoods from, since the very beginning, but I think, you know, in addition to spurring very comprehensive community revitalization, one of our major goals is to reinforce that sense of community where affordable housing and market-rate housing is seamlessly integrated so that no one can tell the difference as to the, the status of any particular housing. And the other thing is improving the housing conditions for really all residents in the CNI area, not just the Ridley residents, but all the others, so that they all have an opportunity to remain. I know initially there was a lot of fear about gentrification in the neighborhood, and we've been able to address that in, in many ways, but part of the key plan was to give support to the Ridley residents so that during this transition phase for them, that they could maintain access to the comprehensive array of services that USI has been providing to them. The plan also encourages homeownership, not only for potentially some of the Ridley residents, but also for new residents who may want to come to the community and take advantage of and live in this very incredibly revitalized area. CNI has tied in very nicely to a lot of work we've done historically in the southeast community. We did a lot of early site assembly and land banking. We assembled the site for Brooks Crossing several years ago, you know, this is directly across the street from the first phase of housing for CNI. We've developed about 120 homes through our Madison Heights, single-family homes for sale, scattered sites throughout the southeast community, and then the, the Lower Jefferson Avenue streetscape that, that has been going on for the last several years. So, as Owen said, our CNI was tied to the redevelopment of the obsolete Ridley Public Housing Complex that was built in the early 1940s, and in preparation for that revitalization and site clearance, we provided tenant protection vouchers to the families who lived there at Ridley so that their housing costs didn't change from where they lived at Ridley to being able to use a voucher and live on the private sector. A feature of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative is to provide an opportunity for families who want to come back to the area during this transition phase, that they have the ability and the mechanism to be able to come back. This slide shows where the families from Ridley moved. 38% of them stayed in ZIP Code 23607, which we sort of expected. A lot of people have a lot of support, family, and other resources in the area that they wanted to stay. About 20% went to ZIP Code 23608 in the Denby area, and then all the other ZIP Codes in Newport News shared in those families anywhere from 6% to 9%. 10% of the families moved from, from Newport News but stayed in the Hampton Roads region, and 3% moved out of state. So, this provides sort of the status of, of the three phases of, of housing involved with, with, with CNI. The lift and rise on Jefferson, there are 81 units there, it is complete, and we're pleased to say that is mostly occupied at this point. The Ridley phase, phases that are, there are two phases there, one north of 16th, one south of 16th. There are 155 rental units there, and it is well underway and is certainly on schedule. Our downtown phase is at Washington and 28th Street, 73 units there. change from where they lived at Ridley to being able to use a voucher and live on the private sector. A feature of the Choice Neighborhoods initiative is to provide an opportunity for families who want to come back to the area during this transition phase, that they have the ability and the mechanism to be able to come back. This slide shows where the families from Ridley moved. Thirty-eight percent of them stayed in ZIP Code 23607, which we sort of expected. A lot of people have a lot of support, family, and other resources in the area that they wanted to stay. About 20% went to ZIP Code 23608 in the Demby area. And then all the other ZIP Codes in Newport News shared in those families anywhere from 6% to 9%. 10% of the families moved from, from Newport News but stayed in the Hampton Roads region, and 3% moved out of state. So this provides sort of the status of, of the three phases of, of housing involved with, with, with CNI. The lift and rise on Jefferson, there are 81 units there. It is complete, and we're pleased to say that is mostly occupied at this point. The Ridley phase, phases that are, there are two phases there, one north of 16th, one south of 16th. There are 155 rental units there, and it is well underway and is certainly on schedule. Our downtown phase is at Washington and 28th Street, 73 units there. Early this year, we were awarded affordable housing tax credits. We got some resources from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and we expect it will start on this project later, later next year. So this, I think we went ahead one. There we go. Thank you. So this shows an aerial view of where those replacement units are and the numbers of units, but gives you the, in the foreground is the former Ridley site, certainly the largest, the lift and rise up at 28th, 29th Street, and then the downtown site directly across on, on 28th Street. The, the plan also calls for some scattered site, single-family development throughout CNI, and then also there will be some, there are lots that we've reserved on the former Ridley site along Ivy Avenue to build some single-family homes for sale. None of the CNI dollars can be used for for-sale housing. It's all going to the rental, so we're using other resources that we have, but that's certainly a goal to include and increase the homeownership in the Southeast community. So this shows in a, in a quick snapshot, the resources that we've utilized. And as Owen said, you know, $30 million seemed like a lot of money when we first started, but we knew it was going to take a lot of other resources. So just over $19 million of that $30 million of CNI dollars was reserved for housing, but that $19 million is leveraged another $120 million in investment and resources just in the housing component. We've successfully secured regional, state, and federal resources, whether through affordable housing tax credits, through the, through the state's Department of Housing and Community Development. Our local planning district commission has provided some additional funding for this. And I think the thing that I'm most excited about, I mean, real debt on this property or on all these properties combined will be $18.3 million. All the other resources coming into the housing development is tied to the, getting the project complete and also meeting the affordability periods, that we meet those required affordability periods. So that, much of that other, those other resources are either grants or soft debt. So this is some aerial real live shots of, of the lift and rise between 27th and 29th Street. There's one unit that's not been leased yet of the 81 here at this location, and that includes affordable units, some replacement units. We've had 23 of the former Ridley households have moved back to, to this location, and then we have some market rate units included here as well. So these are just some shots to give you an appreciation of the amenities. This is the, the, the building to the north is the shot on the left, and then also we have a shot of the community room in that same building. We have community space in both, very similar to this. It's more of a green, green rather than blue in the other building, but we have community spaces in both of the buildings. On the fourth floor of the northerly building, there is a fourth floor terrace that is a very, very attractive location where families and individuals can, can gather and look over to the skyline and to the James River. It's very lovely. Playground, a fitness center, and also on the ground floor, combined on both of these buildings, about 3,000 square feet of commercial space that's being finished out as we speak. So moving on to the Ridley site, these are elevations here depicted on the slides, but this project is certainly coming out of the ground. Construction is well underway and is on schedule. We'll have a hun, a total of 155 new rental units there that'll be primarily in townhouses, but there's also a smaller mixed-use building where we're going to have on the ground floor, and this is on the building to the left, on the ground floor, 2,100 square feet of commercial space. So this is, um, this is the townhouses on the left that are going up directly across the street for the, from the Greater House of Prayer, and it is on the northerly edge of the site. On the right is the corner of 16th Street and Jefferson Avenue where the, the multi-use building is in the red, and then below that is sort of the roof line and the steel construction of the Early Childhood Education Center, which as you know is a partnership with Virginia Peninsular Community College and the Peak, the Peak Childcare Center, the out of Hampton, coming to Newport News. So this is our downtown phase. We are in the design stage now. So this is an early design of the, of the downtown phase at Washington Avenue and 28th Street. And as I've indicated, we've secured the, the lion's share of the resources needed for this in, you know, through the state and through the federal affordable tax credits. But we're still, still working on the financing stack for this, for this last phase. There's a gap at this point of about $2.75 million, but that's fairly standard during this phase in putting together the financing for one of these developments, and we're confident that we'll find the resources through, there's some various opportunities that we're looking at, and we'll be able to, to make that work. There's been a significant amount of private sector housing development in the downtown that's happened, you know, from before when we made this application. You know, that new housing development was not particularly envisioned. There are other developments in the downtown are primarily market rate. This will again, for us, be a, a mixed, mixed income property. We had the HUD representatives here from DC early in August, and they were very impressed with the tour. We sat down with them, went over where we are with financing, and they were very, very impressed with our progress and with the quality of work that's going on. We continue to work with them and, and work with WRT, our design firm, on the final design of, of the downtown effort to make sure that we're within available resources and we maximize the quality in the design for this last phase. And we believe we'll be under construction with this probably in 10 or 11 months in the downtown. So, you have any questions?
Oh, a quick question. Is there any data, because you mentioned that the lift and rise is almost completely occupied?
Yes, there's one unit that's not been leased.
Is there any data of the amount of, for the people who are occupying the residence now that are those that relocated and returned back?
Yeah, 23 of those 81 total units are occupied by former Ridley residents. We went through an exercise, they were giving, they were given the, they were notified first, and we've started moving them in and taking their applications first because they have to be given a priority. And so 23 families ended up moving here. Some decided they wanted to wait to move to the Ridley site. Some people may end up using that tenant protection voucher that we gave them. You know, we've, we've done several, two surveys so far, and we're working on a third just to check in with people to see what their plans are. And a significant number have said they like using their voucher and they like being where they are, or the flexibility of moving, you know, with their, with their voucher. And as long as they stay eligible for the voucher, meaning their income meets the criteria, they still get the same sort of housing assistance they got when they lived at Ridley in terms of assistance and paying the rent.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ewing.
With the new apartments that's in the plans, are any of those luxury apartments?
Some of them are market rate. I'm not sure, you know, what we, how we would...
I talked to a lot of friends, and they say there's no really luxury style apartments in this city. So people, you know, there's more modern, that everybody wants to live in market rate apartments. Some people want to live in high-end apartments.
Right.
Do the city have any plans of maybe?
We don't have any plans for that, but I think there, as I said earlier, there are some housing that's in the, in, in the design and planning stage for the downtown, and whether or not they would meet that criteria for luxury, you know. But, but we are doing some market rate, and there are some other market rate units that are going up in the downtown.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
One of the notes in the beginning says increase home ownership rate.
Yes.
Where, where is that at on this plan?
Well, for the city, it's, and I'll, I'll defer, the last time I knew, for the city of Newport News, it was about just over 50% for the entire city. But for the Southeast community, I don't think we've done one specifically for CNI. It was more in the upper 30%, 37% homeownership rate. And a lot of that's because historically there've been a lot of rental properties in the Southeast community, and certainly through the work that we've done with taking down the Old Harbor and Dickerson and, and Ridley, you know, we're, we're changing that percentage of the, of the units that would be available for homeownership. And then with the work that we're doing with the new housing, single-family development will help contribute to that, increasing that rate.
Thanks.
Well, Karen, you know, I, you know, I certainly am a fan of yours and all that you have been doing, and the entire team of our city, Florence Planning, everyone who has really taken this Herculean task of what we started years ago to be able, because it was such a balancing act, trying to, you know, prepare, move people, demolish. It's been so much, and to see us at this place, of course, you always see me walking around, so I already know some of it, but to be able to see us at this point and to be able to be a representative of this council and hear as I'm walking around the community, the people and how happy they are about the new housing, as we met with the Lift and Rise residents last month, the majority of them were very happy, and, and the housing is just good quality. So I'd want to thank you, and to talk, answer your question too about the homeownership. You also, before this started getting built, the scattered site lots that we had...
The Madison Heights developments, we built about 120 houses.
Well, no, there were some other vacant lots that were buildable lots that we were just cutting over years, and you, and you contracted those out or...
That's right. There's been an effort with Housing Authority-owned vacant lots and then assembling sites. Owen's worked very closely with, you know...
And it looks good.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's certainly, you can see a big difference.
And, and the fact that also so many builders are, were happy to get that opportunity because so many times they're knocked out of trying to bid on properties like that because they don't have the money to do big projects like a, you know, million-dollar projects, but this really helped them build their portfolio as well. So it's been a win-win. So I just thank everyone for all of the work that we've put in to, to get this far, and I certainly thank you.
Thank you for your vision and your support throughout this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think I'm the last leg of this relay, so I'll move quickly to keep you all on track and on schedule, but certainly can answer any questions as we move through. Following up on Lit Neighborhood, that's the third leg of that stool with CNI of people, housing, neighborhood, and really driven by five goals: connectivity, economic development, neighborhood health, safety, and sense of place. So those are the principles that really guided development of the neighborhood plan as well as the improvements that are underway within the neighborhood. As a reminder, as part of the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant, $4.5 million was reserved and allocated for those critical community improvements, so impactful neighborhood improvements, really to drive that transformational change within the neighborhood in concert with the people support services, the new housing and that work. You can see in this slide, this is a rough sources and uses budget for those key, key projects. The $4.5 million from CNI is leveraging around 15.2 in city funds, and then another 2.2 in other typically grant funding from state and local sources. We're being very aggressive in pursuing grant opportunities to help bring in outside capital from federal funding sources, state funding sources, to really reduce that local commitment. But again, that's just the big picture of how the sources and uses for the products that I'm about to talk about are developed. Health and Wellness Trail, so Karen mentioned the Ridley redevelopment site. This is a trail project that'll connect 18th Street all the way down to King Lincoln Park, so providing amenities directly accessible to the redevelopment site, activating Bates Drive and making that connection to the asset that we have at King Lincoln Park. 18th to 12th Street, that site development is in progress, design's under final review right now. That phase will be completed in tandem with the Ridley site. And then the 12th Street to King Lincoln Park segment is under design right now with JM2, so both of those pieces are in progress. I mean, hopefully that'll follow the connection to the park very, very closely with the completion of the Ridley site. And again, having that amenity that includes play equipment, passive recreation area to really have amenities for everyone. Note down at the bottom corner, there's a large park feature that has open area for passive recreation, and we're able to leverage what was a stormwater requirement into a feature. And then I'll just point out too, there's a parking area too, looking at how folks that want to come and visit the neighborhood, it's accessible to folks that come and visit as well. 2510 Jefferson Avenue, if you all have driven by this, its condition has accelerated decent or accelerated, sorry. Its condition's gotten worse very quickly with some of the recent storms. But this is a project, it's a facade safe project, so we're working to maintain the facade. It'll be a 3,200 square foot building, but the vision is a first floor with one unit designed as a coffee shop, the other's a retail unit, and then two first, second floor office suites. This property's next to the offices at 25 and J, so looking to complement the work there, as well as continue to activate that section of the Jefferson Avenue corridor with the lift and the rises up the street. So excited about that. Construction should start this month, so you'll begin to see activity on the site there. Estimated completion is summer 2024, so that'll be one that's in progress, and excited to see that activated, and again, kind of continuing that look along the corridor. Gateway enhancements was another goal through the planning process. How do we celebrate entrances to the neighborhood? Two locations were identified, 39th Street and Marshall Avenue, so the corner there next to the Carter Funeral Home Project, then the other locations at the 25th Street and Jefferson Avenue intersection as you come over 23rd Street. There's a sign concept shown on the slide that our communications team has developed, extending out of the work completed by North Star, working to get resident input on that. That may evolve, but again, that's the vision for that space with the signage, nice landscaping, again, celebrating those entrances to the neighborhood. Another project that folks are very excited about and beginning to see the impact of this program is the residential facade program. At a high level, it's a program that provides up to $20,000 grants for exterior home improvements targeted toward owner-occupied dwellings within the CNI geography. So looking to build equity wealth with those homeowners, help reward folks for their patience and the impact of living in the adjacent, adjacent to a distressed public housing community. The program was developed and is being implemented by the Redevelopment Housing Authorities, so Karen, Lysandra, team have been fantastic. Applications were accepted early part of this year, so 113 applications were received. I think you all have gotten, Housing Authorities gotten through around 50% of the review on those, and 17 projects have been completed to date. You can see on the slide a few before and after photos of the more impactful projects, really seeing the transformation with those homes and the benefit that it has had to the homeowners. Another project is the seafood market project. One of the comments through the planning process was how do we make the, the catch, the product that's coming through the seafood industrial park more accessible to the neighborhood? And this was actually a topic for one of the neighborhood leadership class cohorts. But the location's at the head of the Seafood Industrial Park. We're working with work program architects on the design, but the visions of vendor stalls, kiosks, an opportunity where there can be retail and wholesale seafood purchases, and really have this being an amenity for the neighborhood, for the residents, but also an attraction that's going to draw people in. You can see at the bottom right, a sort of initial sketch for how the site could look, and then some precedent images for the vision for how this is going to look and feel. And we've recently started that process. Hopefully, design will be complete around summer of next year, then with construction starting after that.
Derek, quick, quick question. Can you go back, please? So is the goal for the city to own and operate this, or is it, once it's done, we're going to hire someone else to operate, or are we going to sell it?
The asset's going to be owned by the Economic Development Authority, so that's the entity that's facilitating the construction. We're still working through what the operating logistics will look like. We've looked at whether we do kind of a master operating agreement for the space that then they would work with to get, bring in the tenants, the proprietors that would be there. I think as the design progresses a little bit more, we'll be able to look, kind of see how the, how the space wants to function and whether we manage those leases directly with those tenants or have a larger operating agreement with someone that can manage it on our behalf. So we're still working... So we're still working through those details. We really want to find the best way for that space to be successful and operate. As we get more into the design, I think, begin to flesh that out a little more.
Thanks.
Will the seafood market have the capability of local people-owned boats being able to drive up on the dock to access this market?
That's a very good question. So we've been working in parallel with this project on dock improvements. There's two existing piers out there now that are a little worn, so we are working on, the design's underway to dredge the northern part of the harbor there, which is silted in, it's not really accessible to some of the vessels. But look at installing a dock system that, A, will support the existing crabbers, the watermen that are utilizing the space, but have opportunity for public boat access and mooring. So folks will be able to come into the harbor, access the seafood market in the neighborhood through that point. So that's a design process that's working in concert with this on the seafood market. And not too long ago, y'all may remember the grant that we got from the United States Economic Development Administration, I think it was around $660,000, that funding supporting both the seafood market design as well as the design for that dock and dredge project.
I think that would be very great. I think we'd see a lot of traffic coming from especially the south side over to this area. I went to something like this similar, like three years ago in London, they had to set up where different, but they did, they made this out of containers, but different shelves. It won't just seafood, it's all type of food, but every night it was just packed, and it gave people the opportunity to try different type of foods. And also, a lot of people that are private chefs can't pretty much afford to go into a brick-and-mortar building, and especially with the economy is, this is a way that local entrepreneurs can have a place to do their craft. So I think that's a really good idea, and I think it'd attract a lot of people from the south side as well, especially if we get that access for people to boat and dock and come out and eat and go back home.
Absolutely. And then just, I think, last slide is just hitting on, those were the main projects associated with the CNI grant. That's in the context of all the other broader neighborhood projects that were underway. The Virginia Peninsula Community College Workforce Center that we're working, that'll do maritime trades. The EDAs has implemented a modified facade improvement grant that removes the match requirement for folks that want to make facade improvements to commercial properties, some of the murals that have gone up, the Early Childhood Development Center, and then the work with SECRA, Brooks Crossing Innovation Opportunity Center, 25 and J, and then our recent grant award, $100,000 from DHCD to help implement a rent credit program, and then expand the modified facade program, as well as our e-commerce grant, removing some of the match requirements to the whole southeast community, including CNI. So we're leveraging grants and going after grants wherever we can to complement and build out the work that we're doing. I think at this point, any of the three of us can take any additional questions you may have.
Do we have any questions at this time?
I guess, really quickly. So one, all of this is phenomenal, and I look forward to seeing it come to fruition. You know, the majority of us weren't a part of the original plans, you know, with us, newer council, what have you. So with that being said, if either of you foresee or any challenges or hurdles that could potentially arise from any of this that we should be aware of, please definitely let us know. Or if everything's going to go smoothly, great.
Thanks, Chris.
Well, I would say, as you're talking about that Vice Mayor, that continuing to get my dollars in, particularly as we look at our Early Childhood Center and the, you know, funding of additional apartments, maybe not a huge challenge, but that's all, you know, always trying to get money, particularly for the talk of COVID coming back around. So hopefully it won't, but we can be, we need to be prepared for that, I would think.
Okay.
Frankly, right, I mean, all of the, it has been a challenge. I mean, every, we went into it anticipating it would be a challenge. This is huge transformation, both in terms of the people's lives and then the physical built environment. So we've been pretty successful, a lot of credit to these two standing next to me in terms of finding some of those additional dollars, and we will continue to do that aggressively. But I think we're in a pretty good position, I think we made pretty good progress, certainly what we heard from our friends with HUD as well in terms of advancing the plan and getting within sight of the end of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have our special events update.
This is an update that Shelley Zano, who is the Recreation Program Superintendent for Parks Recreation and Tourism. John?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm here today to review our fall and winter lineup of events, running October 23 to March of '24. So we have five main events listed here on the screen. All of these events are, the admission, amusements, and activities are free and open to the public. So we're going to start first with our following festival. It sounds a little bit different from what we've experienced in the past. We called it the Fall Festival of Folk Life. We have infused a lot of Halloween-themed activities and events and decor to the event, so we expect that the audience will grow, and the appreciation for the two seasons within one event will be appreciated also. So this event is held in Newport News Park. It is a two-day, family-friendly event from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. on October 7th and 8th. Programming includes Halloween and autumn-themed vendors, a huge corn maze, a mechanical pumpkin ride, fortune tellers, all kinds of kind of spooky but fun Halloween-themed elements. So one other thing I'd like to mention about this event, the parking fee is $10.
I'm, excuse me, in Newport News Park?
In Newport News Park, yeah. So moving into November, it's the start of our Enlighten event series, and we're going to start again in Newport News Park in the North District. Celebration and Lights, Virginia's first drive-through light show, runs November 23rd through January 1st. You'll see about a million-plus lights along the two-mile drive. There's lots of beautiful scenery, lots of beautiful lights. One of the new installations this year is the USS Newport News. It's a beautiful silhouette light installation of the ship, and, which was obviously built by Newport News Shipbuilding, so we thought that was a pretty cool element to add. Tickets are $10 in advance or 12 for cars, Monday through Thursday, 15 on Friday and Sunday, and $75 per bus. Moving down to Central District, we're going into Lights at the Fountain at City Center at Oyster Point. We have some really new elements that are cool to this event, starting first with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Saturday, the first Saturday in December, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. You'll see lots of live entertainment, performers, food vendors, gift vendors, giveaways, children's activities, pictures with Santa, lots of Instagrammable moments. So the decor out there is going to be very, very, very pretty. And this is what I'd like to talk about. So this is going to be our new interactive art installation this year in May. This was featured at the World Trade Center in New York City, and it is making its way to City Center at Oyster Point this December. It will be available December 2nd through January 1st. As you can see, it's beautiful in the daytime, but it's exceptionally pretty at night. So it's musical, lights up, there's a mirror for reflective pictures. It's really quite fascinating. So we have 10 of those units being installed in one of the bumpouts directly across from our interactive 50-foot-tall intelligent tree. Also new in 2023, we have 15 minutes of never-seen-before animated holiday shows. So we have themed this year Let It Glow, because in addition to the 15 minutes of new animated shows, we have 55 perimeter trees that surround the lake. Those trees used to have about 250 to 300 lights per tree. They now have 1,200 to 1,400 lights per tree, so we aptly named it Let It Glow this year. So it's actually going to be pretty, pretty beautiful. The hours of operation nightly are 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Moving down to the South District, we begin the Holiday Frost event at Downing Gross Cultural Arts Center. We have expanded the events offered in the South District this year. There are going to be events both Friday and Saturday, a total of five. Holiday Frost begins this event series on Friday, December the 8th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a RSVP-required event. It can house about 500 to 600 family members, so RSVP is required. It's easy to do, you can just go to the Downing Gross website, downinggross.org, to reserve your place. But this is going to be a super fun year because it's a salute to 50 years of hip hop. So it's three floors of fun and activities. There is a hip-hop karaoke station, there is a hip-hop silent disco, and we also have breakdancing elves. So lots of candy, crafts, giveaways for the kids, toy giveaways. It's a really beautiful event, the inside of the center looks pretty stunning. The following day, on Saturday, December 9th, also at Downing Gross, we have a hip-hop rendition of A Christmas Carol. This is where the dance kids and the theater kids come together and perform this, the show, three times on Saturday between 11:00 and 5:00 p.m. Tickets are $5, also available on the Downing Gross website. Moving into the evening, starting 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Downing Gross, is the Artec Lights event. For some of you that were more familiar with our schedule last year, this event was held at the Brooks Crossing site. The field that we occupied has been developed, and we made the decision to move the event into the neighborhood at Downing Gross. We hope that it increases attendance and walkability for the kids, and we really hope to grow this event and, again, increase attendance. So from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the 9th, food vendors, another silent disco, DJ, children's activities, snow globe, and more. Also down at Downing Gross, we have moved the Artec Lights Nightly Light Show, also available at the same time as Lights at the Fountain, December 2nd through January 1st, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. It includes a 30-foot animated tree with holiday decor. And last but not least, the homemade holiday jazle at Pearl Bailey Library. This is a super cute event, Saturday, December the 9th, 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. Holiday crafts, jazz music, and refreshments. I did put one of these event listings in front of you so that you guys would have reference to those dates and times, in case you forget. So we also have other annual holiday events throughout the city, some private, some public. The Port Warwick Tree Lighting Ceremony on November the 25th, the Hilton Gingerbread Celebration, Saturday, December the 9th, the Holiday Home Lights Tour, which usually starts right around Thanksgiving. As soon as people start to sign up and we populate that map, it's accessible on the city's website. And then Santa's Workshop is at Denby Community Center. Moving into 2024, the annual winter carnival is held at Yeol Kmart site. That's going to be on Saturday, February the 3rd, from noon to 5:00 p.m. Lots of carnival games, inflatables, food vendors, face painting, giveaways, DJ, lots of activities for the kids. We also have a synthetic skating rink available for the weekend, beginning on Friday, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. And running into March is the 10th anniversary of the One City Marathon. My next click is going to show you a short video of last year's winner.
[music]
I think it was 2 hours, 23 minutes, and 26 seconds. So for those of you who are planning on running the marathon this year, you have a goal. So we kept the schedule the same as last year. On Saturday, March the 2nd, runners will enjoy the Maritime 5K, and for me, the nautical mile fun run is more my speed. And Part 1 of the celebration, the finish line celebration, rather, is going to be held at Tradition Brewing Company. Moving into Sunday, the two main events, the Half Marathon and the One City Marathon, with the Finish Line Celebration held at Coastal Fermentary. And again, the marathon itself starts at Newport News Park, runs the length of the city, and ends in the Yard District. Questions?
Great presentation. I'm excited about all the activities that y'all have planned. Y'all always did a good job, especially at the Denby Day, it was real organized, a lot of the citizens enjoyed themselves, and it was fun. Last year when I attended the marathon, I think it was kind of confusing of the going to Tradition's brewery afterwards. So maybe we could have some type of signage or some way so people can know to-
To cross the street.
To cross the street.
Yeah.
Because I didn't even know.
We can make that happen, for sure.
Yeah, but everything else is perfect.
Great. Also in front of you, I wanted to mention you have a sealed white envelope with your name on it. That includes your Fall Festival parking pass and event information. Any other questions? You what? Oh, following. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shelley.
Next up, we're going to have the civic engagement strategy to talk about how we can rotate city council meetings. Before I turn it over to the manager, we had the discussion, I believe, last week, but I know there's been an appetite for us to, you know, we televise work sessions, but the sort of next step is a rotation, we can have one in the north and one in central. So for this year, we thought it was probably more prudent that we do it one time in Denby. You know, we already had that set up, we already sort of know what we can do. But what I would like is, I don't think it's fair to citizens, it's like, one month is here, then we switch it, so if we could publish the schedule for next year sooner rather than later, I think that's a way that you can still promote transparency, but also we can like have, no kidding, these are the dates that are going to be in central and are going to be in uptown. But with that being said, I'll turn it over to Alan.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. We currently have six sites that have the necessary IT and infrastructure support to be able to successfully televise your work sessions. And as the mayor indicated, to make things simple and to go ahead and launch the initiative, we feel that we can comfortably work with everyone to develop a schedule. And again, to make things simple and easy to get going, we would recommend that you have your very first meeting coming up at the end of the current calendar year, and my recommendation would be to designate the Denby Community Center as that location. Then we can work with you on the other locations. The other locations don't neatly align necessarily with the north, central, and south boundaries, but they are the facilities in which we have the necessary equipment in order to get the signal out and to meet your requirements for these meetings to be broadcast at the same time or live as they are occurring. So just to kind of lay out the options for you, of course, you already familiar with your city hall location in the South District. In the Central District, you have the James Room and York Rooms, which can be combined by opening up the divider between those two rooms, and then so public parking is available in the public parking garage across the street. And then in the North District, we have the Denby Community Center. So those are the three locations that do align with the ability to move meetings to each of the three districts. And then the other sites that you have at your disposal include the Mary Passage Middle School site. You all probably remember that we've had in the past meetings that we have televised there, particularly around the budget discussions. You also have Woodside High School, which is available, again, in the North District, and you have the new Sherwood site, which is also in the North District. So we have plenty of facilities in the North that are available. We'll have to work on the scheduling, if you will, for the North options, but you at least have one additional location in each of the two districts beyond the South that you can access. you can access now. And the big thing really is, I think, perhaps through a working group of individuals, work through the clerk's office, there's so many, there's so many dates that, you know, we want to avoid. We also want to maintain, obviously, I believe, the council's desire to include these work sessions on the dedicated day in which you have a work session, and you also have a city council evening meeting, which, just sort of FYI, presents a little bit of a logistical challenge for us because the room setup that we have going into the work session will also need to be kind of the room setup that we have for the regular evening meeting. So logistically, we can make it work. We just need to do a little bit of pre-planning to make sure that all the pieces fit together.
Is there any questions from council about a sort of cadence, a percentage? I know city hall and all of the resources is down here in the South. I'm not saying that we do 1/3, 1/3, 1/3. Maybe 50%, we keep down here, then 25% in central, 25% in the north. I'm just trying to, and I know this is going to be a sort of influx as we work together, but to make sure that people who live all the way in the North can still participate and in central and in the South. So it's still going to be a sort of work in progress, but I do want to get that established on the books.
How many council meetings do we have a year? 23? Yeah, 21?
21.
That's a guess.
It's August. I think it's around.
Right, 21.
You only have one meeting in July.
August, right, in December.
Okay, then yes.
Public math is always dangerous, but I think that's nine times two, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Right, it was good.
Hopefully, that's right. It's on camera.
So I guess I'm just trying to, are we, we want to, you said 25%, but is it, I mean, I know it's not set in stone. Do we want to say two? Do we want to say three? I don't know.
So my, I think the sort of in order to statement is, one, that people from all across the city can participate, but also that it's not for a two-hour council meeting that is going to require like 10 hours of staff input and AV support, et cetera. So I don't need people working through the night just for, so we can have a two-hour council meeting. So I would love to sort of balance that. I think going into next year, if we could have probably two in the north, two in the cen, yeah, I think that's a fair thing to do. I don't think it needs to be a 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 split. But I think two, minimum of two in each, in the north and the central is probably appropriate. And then additionally, if you include, and I can just get into my comments, I know Councilman Vic, we talked about having that joint meeting with the school board. I think that would be helpful to do that in the central part of the city, so everyone can sort of participate. And so I think you're going to also have some extra meetings that pop up, but I think two and two is probably appropriate, starting out. And happy to flex to three if that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I think that's a good number.
Yeah, I think so. For the first year, starting it, I think it'd be a good...
Two or three.
Yeah, two or three, yeah.
Okay. We're okay with that, Alan?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought you were choosing one or the other.
We good there? Okay. So I'll just jump into, we have comments, ideas, and some suggestions. I'll start just because I just want to head up out civic engagement. So I've been talking to some of the members of Hampton, and there's an appetite, just like we have a joint meeting of the school board, I believe there's an appetite to have like a joint city council meeting of Hampton and Newport News. So we'd love to start that next year. I think it's, you know, what happens in Newport News is often tied to Hampton and vice versa, and I think there's too many silos. So we'd love to have, to start this, having one joint city council meeting, Hampton and Newport News. And we can, you know, we can rotate it and play the politics or whatever, but I think it'd be really interesting to start that next year.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
Colleen, you know, I don't know if we're seeing any issues with it, but what does the state say with two councils meeting? Is there anything special about it?
Both clerks will have to give notice of public meeting, and it'll be...
Has this happened before? Has this ever happened before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And I think there's, I think when you look, whether it's our unhoused population, the airport, there's a lot of things that happen on the peninsula that I think we should all be in the room in, and so...
Homelessness.
Yeah, exactly. So if we're able to get that next year, that would be great.
And also, the partnership now, that was so different years ago when everybody was in silos about police and fire. Now it's, we share that, our police and fire work together. So that'll be good for us to know the full scope of it.
Agreed. So if we could look into that from the clerk's office next year. And then the two things I have is, Alan, let's make sure, one, we schedule that, I talked to the head of the school board, they would love to talk about that joint meeting between council and school board sooner rather than later. So if we could get that on the books. And then would love to have an update. I know we have a lot of unfilled positions from an HR perspective. If we could have a briefing, not soon, but just to put it on the radar, just so we can just talk about the unfilled positions would be great. And that's all I have, and then we'll just, we'll start this way.
I don't have anything.
I would just say, I'd just like to bring to the table, I did send a message to city manager, but I serve on Virginia First Cities, and so we are constantly having reports about housing and our, the state of our city on different issues. And as the representative, by me not being the staff, I don't have all of the information. So I just want to make sure that you all are clear, as I'm serving, that I am working with Alan, first on the housing piece, to be able to get somebody from the staff to be able to come to some of the meetings, because some of the meetings are not just for the elected representatives, they're for staff. So I really do want to do a better job of us. Normally, over the years that I've been on there, there's been Jerry Wilson. But as it's evolving, it's getting more complicated, and it's going to need to be some experts in housing and, you know, our job situation, how are we looking on workforce and those type of things. So I will be coming before you and Alan to either find out who can go or my suggestion, who I think would be a perfect fit. And they usually meet in Richmond or on Zoom. And that's all I have.
Well said. Thank you.
No comments.
I just want to remind council members that you will have one item of new business tonight, and that is just a resolution to ratify and terminate the emergency, declaration of emergency for the tropical cyclone that hit last weekend.
And I just have one question that could help me clarify your sense of timing. I have begun discussions with the school superintendent about possible points of discussion for a joint school board, city council meeting. Is there a desire by the council to have the meeting within a certain timeframe? Are you looking to come together here quickly? If you could give me a sense of your perspective on the timing of that meeting, that would be helpful. It doesn't have to be here right now, but if you could just chat with me after the work session today, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. With all that being said, I think we stand adjourned. Thank you.
[applause]